I would like to call this regular meeting of city council to order.
No, it's committee of the whole.
Or committee, I'm sorry, committee of the whole meeting to order at seven oh six P M, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty two. I would like to acknowledge that we have regrets from deputy mayor landmark. And council fountain will be joining us after eight P M. We have counselor Valentino, counselor McMurdo on Zoom. We also have Pammy Probic administration on Zoom and the rest of us here in council chambers. Next, I would like to acknowledge that we're on treaty five land, the land administrative prenation, homeland of the Maykey, and we're all treaty people. Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda? Counselor Ellsworth, counselor Prue, all in favor?
All right.
Carrie, thank you. Next, we're going to go to community comments, feedback. We have ten minutes for this portion. Do we have any comments, please?
I have a question on the check register.
Hey, please state your name.
On Mount 20th Street.
Thank you, sir.
Check number zero zero three, three, nine, eight, five, in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and sixty two dollars and thirty four cents to set art welding and septic services. I'm wondering what that's for?
Well, get the breakdown. We'll have to bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
Robert Chuckery, fifty two ranking. My question is about our snow removal and very much lack there is of. I drive one of the tallest trucks in town. And at every intersection in the city, and I mean pretty much everyone other than a turn lane, you cannot see past the stop sign. You cannot see over some of the stop signs. I noticed that Burtwood Trailer Park Road has been well cleaned three or four times this year. And I live in that area, and I think it's great because I drive that road every day to work. But the rest of the city, visiting friends, family, and everything else, the roads are terrible. I'm sure we have enough equipment and people qualified to move snow, and it should have been done a lot sooner. My question is, when are we going to do it? After it melts? Or next year?
All right. Thank you for your question. Anthony?
Yeah, I can look into when the snow is going to move and speak to the department. I know that the department was challenged through the months of January and February with a number of the COVID restrictions and isolations. Also, a number of the departments were quite short-staffed at the time. But as for moving forward, I'll have to follow up and find out what their plans are.
I'll have the whole question asked, Robert Chuck again. There's twenty four hours in a day, seven days in a week, three hundred and sixty five days in a year. We get eight months of winter. Valley and every other company I work for does shift work, and even though they're unionized, tells their people to work at different times to accommodate the lack of people there is to make sure the job is done. I would like to know why the city has about that.
Yes.
Throughout the city has been running shift work when possible. So there have been night shifts run, just depending who's available during those shifts.
Also, we were challenged there with, we have an equipment policy that we don't work in the super cold weather with the equipment. So some of those very cold days, our equipment wasn't on on the streets due to policies. But we will give you some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to add to Mr. Chuckery said here, I've got in ten days, it'll mark fifty one years since I moved to Thompson. I have never seen it this bad. I've seen winters where public works was on strike, where did not get this bad.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments? Saying no, we'll move on. Thank you. First is five point one is reports from finance, temporary check registers.
The, just as normal, the check registers for the month are attached. The councils are viewing for any questions.
Is there any questions going forward that people would like to check on from our council, uh, Council McMurdo?
Uh, yeah, I know it's marked on there on the, uh, for check number zero zero three, four, zero, six, six, red septic services for twenty five thousand, seven, fifty six. Um, that, that is all for services engaged at the wastewater treatment plant, just for information.
Yes, that particular check there is specifically for hauling that was done from the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on check registers? Okay, thank you. Saying no, move on. Finance, six point one is a memo from the chief financial officer in regard to the special arrangement letter from the C I B C. Anthony?
So this is just a recommendation for approval of the new special arrangement letters. So as the memo mentions, finance department had undertaken review of the bank accounts with our financial institution last few months. Because we've added a number of additional accounts, and there were some concerns over the interest calculations. C I B C is recommended updating their special arrangement letters. That will change how the interest is being distributed, as well as removes the rate cap for the average monthly thirty day banker's acceptance rate, less five basis points. Um, so this has negatively impacted the interest calculations over the last year, and the new arrangements will result in a higher potential of interest.
Okay, thank you. Um, are, any other, any questions? Uncle?
Yeah, uh. It looks like there's a lot of count. And one of my question is, did we get others proposal from other bank?
I believe the proposals went with the bank that we're currently with. So if there's a direction to go to other banks, then the direction will cast.
May I follow up, please? I believe we had the conversation about shopping around. We did, and we all kept to agreement and said, yeah, let's have a different look at different proposal flow. But now to me, this is done deal, right?
No, this is not a done deal because council could say no that they want. If you're looking for an R F P or something put out for different banking units, that is something that could, uh, the administration could do. I know this has been brought to committees of the finance in the past, when you have finance committees, and there was concerns about those rates. And the analysis that was provided showing that moving the financial institutions is such a high cost, that at the time it was recommended to be done. But if that's something that council might do, and that's something that we could bring back to the administration.
Thank you.
One final question, please. Thank you. And when administration put out this agenda. Okay. And I believe it's a mistake. One of the documents supposedly private confidentially. And somehow the public got that. It's my concern now. And basically, after that, I think the administration realized, so they took that out. But someone, I don't know who got that information, that information missed at all our bank account. So here is my, my problem. A lot of hacker around this world, millions of them. So are we going to face this problem and risk in the future? Someone got to be held accountable for that. Why is it happen?
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. I need answer.
No, I have to follow up on why that happened.
It's serious. This is serious.
Okay. Pastor Valentino?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Smoak. Uh, yeah, so this is just the banking arrangement. It has nothing to do with how we agreed to look at what our investments are paying. This is just the special arrangements for some of the fees and how it could affect some of the interest and with what basis point. So I'm fine with this as is, and we did do a full review on the finance committee about actually moving the day-to-day banking, but that's a separate issue. Um, this is just some of the special arrangements between us and corporate for some of these accounts. And, and these accounts that we have and everything in them, this is all also identified in public document in our financial plan and our audited statements that come from the auditor. So, yeah, I'm fine with this is, it's not a huge deal. So I'm good with it. Thanks.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm going to follow up on Counselor Wong's remarks at the start of this conversation, and I too was informed by the public that this was posted and then taken down. I, in fact, went on the on the public website prior to coming to this meeting to see if I could access, and I couldn't. But, but it was up there, and people have had that outside of this chamber. This, to me, should have been an in-camera conversation first. And then we would have brought it public, we would have made sure that did not. And now if you look at the document in itself, and it says very clearly that the, uh, in the document confidentiality in terms of this letter and the special arrangements are confidential between you and us. This is from the C I B C. And accordingly, you will not disclose the contents of this letter and the special arrangements to anyone except their professional advisors, or as may be required by law. That's pretty serious stuff to be, Madam Mayor, and I will tell you right now that certainly the person that raised it with me is very concerned that our bank accounts and all the other information is now public. And to Counselor Wong's point, um, certainly, we're not those professionals, I'm sure, and hopeful or not, that can act into accounts. I certainly couldn't. But I, I related to, I do taxes on the side sometimes, and I don't think people that, when I do their taxes, want that to be public. That's their personal business. Now, this has gone public. It lists all of our accounts and our rates. Should have been, like I said, in camera and exposes us to possible actors. And Madam Mayor, I would say this, that whoever was given the go-ahead to bring this to the regular committee of the whole should be responsible. Should be responsible. And I'll tell you, I hope that C I B C doesn't come out and charge us or sue us. Because if I was on the other, on, on that foot, and somebody exposed my finances, that'd have a big problem. Uh, to the contrary of what, um, Counselor Valentino said, I will say this. Any dealings with the banks that I've had to do over the years, we should have had a R F P for years and years. I would say that we've been dealing with C I B C a long time, long before I came. And what does that say to the rest of the banking industry within Thompson? We're just going to use C I B C. It's wrong. It's morally wrong and should not be happening. And I would suggest to you, Mayor, that we need to stop this and this attraction. I would, I would say to the counselors that's on this call tonight. And it's this, and two missing, by the way, committee of the whole was going to work, sure working for us. I would say this to you, in good conscience, we must turn this down and send it back, and we need to go out and get an R F P so everyone has a fair shot. And for anyone to say, well, it's going to cost us more, I'd bend down that road, and it could. No one says that we should leave the banking institution that we're currently with. But if they really want to keep our business, they're going to beat or exceed what anyone else would do. But as long as we let them do this, it's costing the taxpayers of Thompson money. And in fairness, we should turn it down. And in fact, I would also say that once the city manager have done his research and investigation, and it proves to be fact that it was put up, and I suspect it had to be taken down sometime today. Because it was there on the weekend, that we need to put, to send a letter of apology to this institution. And hopefully, no one can access our accounts. Right now, they had this document plus they had the check register, a lot of information. Uh, right now, that's the end of my remarks. Now, very disappointed in what they've replaced here.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay, so, um, basically, I did see that too, and I did, uh, make mental note that it was confidential on, on the weekend when I was reading it, and, and did, I did today to look, and it was gone. I think, though, what I read in it is, uh, these are for specific things now, is what this uh, was agreed to. I think an R X P for total bank services is different from this, from the way I was understanding it. Maybe Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong.
This is the special arrangements that were just requested on this one. But I mean, if this is part of the discussion of council wants as a whole for us to put an R P out for different banking, um, or get some sort of quotes, well, then that's something that we pursue. This is being brought forward right now as arrangements for what we have right now.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor Smoak, first of all, thank you for your honesty. Uh, when it comes to, you also knew that it was posted, and I, I suggest it was posted in here. It shouldn't have never happened. So thank you for that. Secondly, schedule A in this document, it lists all of our account numbers, transit number and account numbers. It's okay to go public with that?
No, for sure it's not.
Right. That becomes a big problem for the city of Thompson. And I've been, this is my fourth year on the, the, uh, the, the, the council, and, and, and being the deputy mayor and the chair of finance in the past, I've never seen this before. Never. We have to do due diligence on this stuff. And again, I will close by saying, there's no lousy way that I would ever want someone to know about my finances publicly, and neither should any organization. This is wrong. It's morally wrong. It should not have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, wonder.
Sure, the motion for, for an R F P for banking.
Pardon?
Upbringing motion for, for to look at a R F P for banking.
Okay, you like to make motion to put out an R F P for banking?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Counselor Ellsworth. All those in favor?
Yep, I.
Okay, Carrie, okay, opposed?
Opposed.
Pastor Valentino opposed? It's Carrie. Uh.
It's a consensus because you're in committee of the whole.
Yeah, well, yeah, so it's just a recommendation. So it moves forward. Thank you.
Right. Okay, uh, would this be opposed to non-line? It's not earned to figure out and give it to mistake. We all know it was a mistake, but the person should be recommended and dealt with because we can have mistakes. That's the reason why we're possibly in the trouble we are in these days, because it makes mistakes like this, and no accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I counsel.
I, I would just say that I'm not looking at who posted online. I, I'm just, I don't understand why we didn't deal with this like we do a lot with finances in camera. And then we, as a council, would have moved it to the regular meeting. So we should have had that in the meeting before. So, so the person that posted, I believe, made possibly an honest mistake. There's no way they would have done it purposely. I think whoever sent it to the committee of the whole is the problem. They should have sent it and said, this is an in-camera discussion. It shouldn't be discussed, dealt with, and then sent if we approve to regular committee of the whole, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I do agree. Okay. Next is six point three is a review of the procurement policy, which we all got a copy of.
That's our note six point two.
Oh, six. Oh, I'm sorry, six point two is a memo, the chief, chief financial officer in regards to the credit arrangements.
So this is a yearly resolution that comes forward before council. It's a requirement regardless of which bank we use that we need to approve the resolution, the credit arrangements. Uh, so this is for credit arrangements of three million dollars of overdraft, it would be between the C I B C and the city of Thompson. Um, it's nothing, it's not something used, but it's something that's there and hasn't passed by resolution. So that's per one seventy three, one of the this part.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ellsworth?
Again, Mayor, whether we use it or not, at two point seven five percent prime rate, my figures, I could be wrong. I mean, I'm not much of a finance guy, is eighty one thousand dollars a year if we had used it. I think this is something else that should be sent out for an R F P, and I would move that we do. Because this is money that could be shared amongst the, in banking institutions. I move that we send this for R F P as well.
Thank you, Chair. Here's my concern about having a.
We don't, we don't make a motion on here. It will be a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to someone. We did the last time, so.
Well, and then we corrected that it couldn't be a motion, and so we did make that correction, that it was just recommended it goes on.
Okay, then ask for a consensus who wants to move to R F P.
Okay. Uh, who wants to move the three million over with this? I think what we're trying to say with this one, we'll need the three million wherever we go, you know, whichever bank, as per the municipal act. So, uh, basically, we give the R F P directions, uh, before, yes.
The R P direction is already been received. This is a housekeeping matter that if, to maintain our credit availability, we'd have to pass this resolution every year. So the recommendation is to pass this as it's part of our current banking. But if you want to do a change in banking, that's something that the common that helps.
And that's how I read it also. Uh, Counselor Wong, first.
Thank you, Chair. This is my concern. I did ask this before. A good financial controller, we are, we manage the money that we're not sure. Okay, I understand why we need the three million dollars because of the tax time is September. Sometime we do have to pay, so that's make sure that we have enough sufficient fund to carry on the business. Here's my question. We do have reserve. Why can't we use that as an emergency money to deal with this type of the issue rather than borrow money from the bank? That's another alternative, in my opinion, in financial, uh, world. Unless we have actually no money in the bank, which is called reserve, that we do have. I believe we have around ten million dollars, and six million is untapped because of the, uh, under the law, twenty percent of the operation expenditure. So to me, we should easily take care of the, the borrowing with the better, uh, financial control. And we don't need to go and borrow or get the amount of credit. I understand this is a housekeeping issue, but it's been far too long. We're using the same method over and over and over again, and which is we can take care of ourselves with the reserve that we accumulated for years. And why don't we do that? I'm just struggling with this ideology.
I'll let Anthony explain why we can't just use reserves for this.
Because all the reserves have a stated purpose, and if you're going to use them for something that's not the stated purpose under municipal act, you'd have to have a public hearing, and you might need the minister's permission. You have to look it up exactly what has to happen, but it's a convoluted process. That's because the money in that reserve is for a specific purpose. If you're going to use it for another purpose, that has to be done through a public process. So it's not, if you find yourself in a shortfall, and you need that credit to bridge, using the reserve that way is going to be the long way to do.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Smoak. Um, so this isn't like always the way we do it. This is the way that you have to do it under the municipal act. And, um, I'm supporting this as is. This is just gives us the ability to have cash flow because our taxes aren't due until September thirtieth, and some of our per capita funding that we get and grant money that we get. Um, like, say, for the firefighters or, or some of those kind of operating dollar grants, then this gives us the opportunity to still operate until our tax money comes in. No different than other municipalities. They pass this from the municipal act if their taxes are due in June. This just allows us to have the, the funds available to continue to operate till all of our, our money comes in and our cash flow comes in. Because you don't want to be in a cash flow strapped situation. If you can't just use reserves when you need reserves, you have to go through the process, like Anthony said, with the minister's approval and what those reserves are, are, are set for at that time. So this is a standard housekeeping thing, and this is a standard thing in the municipal act that municipalities pass, so you have dollars to operate. So I'm fine with this as is. If it's the will of council to review banking and R F Ps for the whole banking, that is separate. This is for the now. This is what we need to get in place now due to when our taxes are due. So I'm supporting this as is. I'm not supporting the R F P to, to look at this, because if we're looking at all the banking, that's a separate identity. Thanks.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Prue?
I was just curious if we, if we ever use our overdraft, or is it just something we have to have?
Anthony?
Um, we have not used it as far as I know. So that when I asked the department, when was the last time we used it, they don't remember it being used. But it's something that was passed in case it's ever needed.
Okay. Counselor McMurdo?
Uh, yeah, thanks for that, Mayor. Um, I, I'm fine as well with this as a housekeeping item to move forward on, and, um, I believe that the previous consensus to put forth an R F P should encompass this and, you know, broader, um, kind of banking policy. Um, I, I do have to run for, uh, for a family matter. I'll be back in about twenty minute, half hour. Uh, my, my apologies to you guys in a bit.
Counselor McMurdo has left the meeting for about now. Uh, Counselor Cooper?
So we haven't used this in a long time. Do it cost the city any money to have it?
No.
There's no cost.
Like any line of, it's in like any line of credit. It only charges you if you start using it. So what it is, is a line of credit that's unused. It has to be passed by resolution every year, though, to have that line of credit. Now, if the city does use it, then the interest charges will come into play.
And what's the interest rate on it?
Two point seven five.
Well, I just said that's what the prime rate is.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Would not, we'll call to the question. All those.
This is not a regular meeting. So the request is that there's consensus that it would go forward.
Yeah. Okay, are we, everybody good for going forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Moving forward. Six point three, review of the procurement policy.
Uh, so council has tasked the administration with overhauling procurement policy, bringing forward a number of recommended changes. That has been done with the assistance of M L T Atkins, who have analyzed the different legal parameters that are out there, the free trade agreements, and some of the changes into, say, ethical, environmental procurement, as well as group purchasing that's possible through the A M M, uh, purchasing, uh, company. So those changes have been made in the proposed policy, and, uh, administration is looking for council's feedback. The council's happy with how the policy is. The recommendation would be to bring it for the resolution. If there's any questions or concerns, those can be brought back either through the admin or to the lawyers for further look.
Thank you. I, uh, read through it, and I was, uh, I was happy with the changes in that that have been made, and, uh, thank you for your work in moving it forward to uh, the lawyers for their feedback. Uh, council, any questions? Counselor Valentino?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to see this. This has been many years. I, I'm thinking it was finance with Counselor Ellsworth and I that we started this, making it us as a city run a little bit more efficient now with how the dollar values have now brought back up to speed to present day. This hadn't been looked at for years and years. Um, I think the last time was in twenty thirteen. So I'm happy to see that this has gone a legal route, took a little bit longer than, um, what I thought it would. So I'm happy to see this, and I hope that we can get it to the next regular meeting of council, so we can finally get an up-to-date procurement policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ellsworth.
One, one of the things that was pointed out by the people reviewed it, there was a lot of overlapping and stuff within the policy. And certainly, it's, it's a lot cleaner now. There was a lot of work done into it. Uh, I'm not as familiar with procurement as I'd like to be, but I certainly did take the time and read all, I believe it was twenty, yeah, twenty-one pages. And there's a lot on this agenda, uh, tonight, and a lot of documentation to be read in the prior meeting. So for me to go back now and try to figure out, well, is there something there that would me to speak on would be heard? Because if there was, I probably would have outlined it in a note or something. So again, thank you to administration. It was a lot of work done there. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it outlined some of our tendering processes and that very, you know, more, a lot more cleaner, a lot more understandable for the people too. So I'd like to thank everybody for all the hard work. Any other comments? Uh, do we have the consensus to move this ahead?
Yeah.
I see heads nodding. Yes, okay, this will move ahead. Right here, council. Okay. Number seven is Public Works. Seven point one is a memo from the director of Public Works in regards to tabulation of prices for design supply and installation of the new play structure with including rubberized uh, surfacing, uh, for the east. It doesn't say, but it's from the Eastwood Park. Anthony?
Yeah, so the city of Thompson received funding of a hundred thousand dollars from the Thompson Community Foundation to upgrade the playground equipment at Eastwood Park, which is now known as Foundation Park. Um, the R P was released in January for design and supply. Um, the city received two proposals, and the administration is recommending. The city received two proposals and the administration is recommending the proposal from J D Penner Limited, which had the highest score and at a cost of ninety nine thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars plus applicable taxes.
So after reading through this document, my understanding is that you didn't receive a hundred thousand dollars as as the city manager outlined from the community foundation. Really, what we're on the for, I understand it, is the tax portion on the other thousand or the nine ninety nine thousand nine hundred fifty, ninety five dollars. So is that what we're on the for?
Well, as well, certain taxes are refundable with municipalities, so I believe the GST is reclaimed. So it's likely to be only the PST. But I could find that exact amount.
Right, so to just to continue. When it comes to the Eastwood Park and you receive a hundred thousand dollars, I look at it the same as I do the the Jump Start, which was a great park for kids or children. I know I had the pass fighter all the time. And when when it was open, we had a big turnout at that park. It was great to see that the young people had something other than causing trouble to engage it. And so I'd be remiss if I if I didn't support this because, again, it goes to the Eastwood Park. The majority of the money has been given to us as a gift and it's going to cost us very little. I would much rather be paying some of those taxes than becoming the budget saying that we need a hundred plus thousand dollars. So thank you, Mayor, I will certainly support it.
Thank you. Any other conference? Counselor Valopina.
Thanks, Mayor Smoak. I'm just wondering, have we done an official name change on this park? What's our plans for that? Because if this is gonna go forward, we should have the proper signage and and do the official renaming unless we already have. I'm not particularly sure if we have. And it would really be great if Thompson Community Foundation could come to. I mean, I'm assuming this is gonna go forward, I guess, for next Monday. If they could attend council and we could at least thank them for those in attendance. Because this is great that they did this. Thanks.
Yeah, my understanding was that once the COVID restrictions are down, we could gather at the park, that we would have some kind of ceremony to do the proper renaming of the park with the community foundation, as it's their fund supporting the the switch over of the park. So that will still have to be arranged at a mutually agreeable date that we can have that. And yes, as part of it, we will be switching the signage for the park.
And just for more information, the community foundation, the city hall, Deputy Mayor Landmark and I were receipt of the the check for the hundred thousand dollars. So basically, it was already done. And I, along with Counselor Ellsworth, I took grandchildren in that last year to that park a few times, and it was a very busy park. This will just add basically to to that park because it was very sparse at the time. And this is going to make it much more accessible for all the children in that of Eastwood area. So I too would like to thank the community foundation for their concern. They put a lot of work into choosing where they wanted to put their money for this park. So thank you. So this will move ahead? Yes, I'm seeing. Okay, thank you. Seven point two is a memo from Director of Public Works in regards to tabulation of prices for traffic line painting administration.
So as noted, the Department of Highways used to previously do the line painting within the city. Over time, this got later and later in the year to the point that highways changes processes was no longer offered to any municipalities in the province. So last year, the city of Thompson tendered for traffic line painting. It was awarded root construction and it was then subcontracted to AAA striping and steel coatings. It was meant to be done by June fifteen, twenty twenty two last year. That wasn't done on time, but this year, the R F T states that that's the date that it should be done by. This time, the bidder, the only bidder on it was AAA striping and seal coating. And we're recommending that it go forward for twenty six thousand dollars plus applicable taxes. That's less seventy four fifty five from the previous year's contract. This time, they would be the prime contractor rather than a subcontractor to another company.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Coburn.
Okay, are these just line painting or crosswalk painting to?
They paint only the lines on the streets, so the yellow or white lines. The crosswalks are done by our in-house crews.
Counselor Ellsworth.
So is the reduction because we're going directly to the the contract that did last year or because this year they're going to make the street was instead of curving lines?
My understanding is, I don't know that. That's just the tendered price that it came in, but it is directly to a company rather than as a subcontractor.
Thank you.
Any anybody else? Okay, so are we okay to move this ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move that. Number eight is directly Community Services. Eight point one is a letter from Deputy Minister of Justice and Deputy Attorney General, the Deputy Minister of Municipal Relations in regard to the municipal bylaw enforcement. Anthony?
Yeah, this is just a letter for information, its correspondence from the deputy ministers to mayor and council with respect to bylaw enforcement and community safety officer programs. So it's really there to be received as information. I will note that the department right now of direct community services is reviewing about four or five bylaws that have offenses in them and those will be brought forward for review by council over the coming months.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, for those that may have not read it, I'm a reader, so I read everything. It's about a six page document. And let me tell you, it's some very interesting stuff in there to do's and the don'ts when it comes to C S O's bylaws. So I would recommend if you haven't read it, you should. Because then when you're downtown and you see them doing something they shouldn't, you'll know that there's something they should be doing or not. You'll also know that. So these changes are important and certainly it was good to see myself personally some of the things that the responsible for or not. So thank you.
Yes, I can felt that some of the questions we get from the public were answered in this document. So again, as Counselor Ellsworth said, let's make sure we all get it read up. Just no other comments. Thank you. Okay, so next we're going to legislature. A memo from city manager in regards to Canadian Northern Corridor Research Corridor.
This is for information for council, so it's a webinar that I took in and a workshop with the Canadian Northern Research Corridor program. It's a program that I think the city should keep an eye on. It's looking to make east-west and north-south connections across Canada from the maps that they're proposing with Link Thompson down into the Ring of Fire in northern Ontario and then up across northern parts of Saskatchewan and Alberta, and possibly making energy transmission, fuel transmission and gas transmission pipelines. So some really interesting economic development potential there along with improved transportation nodes, so for passengers. It looks like it's being funded as a Canada-wide initiative with that real focus on the north and the east-west connections, so it's not just down in the south. So really, no cost to us, but a recommendation that we keep an eye on this. We keep this, this something that we're watching and possibly starting to lobby on for support if we need the support of Winnipeg or down to Ottawa.
Thank you. Okay, in two thousand sixteen, I attended an inland terminals conference in Winnipeg, which was talking about this corridor. And actually, so Churchill is classified as an inland port just by where it's located there, that it it is seagoing plus it's all inland. So it would definitely be a benefit to Churchill, benefit to all of us. But we talked when we were on a trade mission to Rankin about doing more work and none of it in that. This would all be part of the the big picture. And us being the center of Manitoba, we would definitely benefit from. Let's keep our eye on this too. So thank you. Thank you, Anthony, for bringing that forward.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Just a quick question now, when I look at this brochure or whatever you call that, it's all in French.
No.
Is there not a page?
It's twelve pages. Yeah, it's twelve and twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. So you please do.
There's more reading for it. Nine point two is a memo from the executive assistant in regards to travel costs for twenty twenty two association Manitoba municipalities and the federal municipalities. Conventions, Anthony?
You know, at the previous meeting, there were discussions on sending delegates to the A M M screen convention as well as the F C M convention. People sent their names forward, the executive assistant has put those names together and budgeted out. The concern that she wants to bring forward to council is that if everyone who's put their name forward goes, there'll be no budget left to send anyone to the fall convention A M M in November. Therefore, either council will have to increase its budget for the year for travel or there'd have to be a discussion on reducing the benefits attending those meetings this spring and this summer. And the financial breakdown is provided.
Counselor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I took the time to go through the costing for both the A M M and the F C M. And I recall when we went to, was it A M M and F C M was the northern one? We went to Flentflons. In fact, I took our my own vehicle and we all piled into it, we were comfortable. We drove to Flentflon, then our business came back. I don't see why the same arrangement couldn't be made to go to Brandon and Regina. I don't know why we need to send four vehicles. I know that's what you gotta cost them as the different ones would go separately. I would suggest we would save the forty five hundred dollars at least, if not more, if we did that arrangement. And secondly, the city manager touched on it, that it's council who decides if we go or not. And that means they would have to certainly increase possibly the budget. Now, I will say this, we just went through two years of COVID. And it was a little training or little traveling, as you as you know, for those two years. And and a lot of the council didn't have an opportunity to to go. I was lucky, I got to go to A M M once, I believe, and F C M once with yourselves. And certainly, there was a lot of information that we brought back. It was a good learned experience. And I think that's one of the things that happens with councillors. They, if they don't vote, they don't mingle with other councils across from east to west coast. They don't ask, they don't know the answers to questions. We asked a lot of questions, mostly Quebec, I mean, mind you, I was at home, there's a lot of easterners there. But we asked a lot of questions that helped us to do our jobs when we come back to serve the public a lot more. Now, I'm the first to say, I'd be the first to drop out before I would see either one of those other councils not go. So it's not a move nation myself personally not going. But I think when you when you've got people that's willing to go, you have to find a way. And certainly, I don't think the taxpayers would frown on the fact that really hasn't been any traveling for two years. So I would suggest that we still look at sending the people that have put ran up and said they go. And for anyone that have never went, let me tell you, if you think it's a joy ride or a a a place you can go on social, well, Counselor Coburn and others was with us when our first trip in Winnipeg. And I remember we were doing ten, twelve hours a day and we're still talking after that to other councils across there. So so it's very important. And I would suggest that we move forward in sending everyone with the only caveat is that we send one vehicle, not four.
Thank you. Definitely, we we do lobby a lot of the different ministers, a lot of different, we from the different provinces. We find out things that we can put into practice in our own northern province here. And we've helped other provinces and other territories too. Sometimes we found out, especially with our indigenous relations, that Manitoba actually, and especially northern Manitoba, is light years ahead of some of them. I actually went, one of the meetings I went to, I ended up on a panel because Thompson was so far ahead of some of the others. So that was, you know, just things like that, that we get out. It's just, it's a lot different than just being on a Zoom convention. You can actually reach out and touch. We've always managed that whoever goes, that we each go to different sessions so that and then we get together after and take out what's good. There's been, I'll say it, there's been the odd session that hasn't been worth going to, but there's definitely been a lot. Those are few and far between that we're definitely learning and bringing home messages from them also. I too agree with Counselor Ellsworth that we should try get as many. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the vehicle thing, you know, but if if somebody wanted to take their own vehicle and, you know, pay the difference, I guess that would be up to them also. But definitely, I I like the idea that it's not, like, there's been a whole pile of this going. But I thank you. Counselor Valopina.
I thank you, Mayor Smoak. I'm happy to see that we have so many councillors stepping up that want to go to events because it's so important, I believe, networking and talking to people and not being anywhere for two years has definitely made an impact in social skills and how we make decisions as people just in our day to day. So I am pleased to see so many people stepping up. I'm definitely supporting it. I mean, there'll be a new council when it comes time for the November convention and maybe they choose not to send anybody, I don't know. So I don't know if we can plan the what ifs for what the new council will do. So I would support this moving forward as is. I think that we move it forward as is. And then if arrangements want to be made amongst the parties that are going, whether it be one vehicle or two vehicles, or somebody has to go through Winnipeg, whatever that may be, but that can be worked out amongst them. So it's good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So do we have consensus to move this forward?
Okay.
Okay, Anthony, it's an agreement to stay as this. Nine point three, A M M resolutions for twenty twenty two.
This is just a discussion piece for council. So our annual resolutions are due every June to A M M. And those are then brought forward and debated. A council has to pass them by resolution. The administrative team has already started to put together a few options for council. But this is really council's opportunity. If there's particular ideas that you want to discuss or bring forward, to email them to the executive assistant Angela English, and we'll bring them to a future meeting for further discussion. It's really just to put it on your radar now so that the discussions could start to happen at the committee hall of what the lobby efforts will be for this year.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I I think this is very important. And so we don't lose it. I mean, all of us can think about the rising cost of our C and P. And we were not part of the negotiations with with the federal government that yet were expected to carry the burden. So I'm sure that if we put along a resolution again, I know it's already been worked on, but it doesn't hurt to bring the resolution. We brought resolutions back to A M M and F C M that's been on the go for years because of this. So I'm just thinking, I use that as an example. I'm sure there's more that the administration come up with, whether it be the ambulances, whether it be the police scene that we're still having issues with, it should still rise up to speak to them at the A M M or F C M. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everybody, anybody else? Counselor Valopina.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. So just for, might be good for council, if you're interested in issues or what resolutions you might want to see coming forth from the city of Thompson is, on the A M M website, it does list active resolutions and the prioritizing of them and stuff. So an exact, a resolution that was passed last time won't and the exact same resolution won't go forward again. They actually have a separate resolution committee. But it's good to go on the website to see what ones are active and that are on the books and then work from there to see maybe what different ones we want to put forward. So just a little bit of information for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other conferences? Okay, so we've all got that, let's put our heads together, talk and see what we want to move ahead. Next item is nine point four, review of the bylaw code of conduct. It was brought forward by Counselor Fountain. Do we want to continue without?
No, it's not brought for by Counselor Fountain. So this has to be reviewed every year as part of the bylaws of the municipal act. So it's requirement every year for this to be reviewed. The last time it was reviewed was October of the previous year, so it's now due to come forward. Counselor Fountain at our last discussions is have forwarded his comments. We've not received any other comments to this time, but I think it's really for council to have a review and bring their comments forward for that future meeting. So council could review this, send their comments forward to executive assistant Angela English. She'll compile them, then we could have all council's comments brought forward for debate. So it's not not feeling attracted to debate it right now, but it's just getting information for that this is something we have to do. And I'm also asking my admin team to put forward their recommendations for council's consideration as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I think with with that being said, make sure you get in.
Oh, sorry, my apologies. Please send those to my executive assistant Tammy Probit, as she will be drafting this one, not Angela English.
Everybody, uh, think what you want to add, read, uh, read uh our policy now and the changes uh that Counselor Fountain has brought forward. And uh, write up your own uh ideas and please move them forward. Okay, thank you, uh, with that, we'll call for adjournment. Counselor Valpino, Counselor Coburn, all in favor? Thank you.